How can you file like a point in ice?
Do you ever go to Legion seventy-two?
Yeah.
I keep meaning to go be a member.
Oh, you're a veteran?
I was telling them like, oh look.
My husband's Dr. D still.
Oh, okay. I was beginning to.
Yeah, I've been meaning to and I just keep forgetting.
Yeah, I'm not a veteran, I'm a son.
Oh, great.
Son or messy of a veteran.
Yeah, right on. Um, I was gonna go there for the, let's say, I think Christmas Eve dinner.
Mm-hmm.
But I didn't register in time.
Oh, really? You don't have to.
Oh, okay. But I wanna get one.
Either city, whatever that is.
I mentioned Kelly and she was like, uh, talk to Ron. And I was like, oh, I, you know?
Yeah, just walk in, they're usually open most nights at five.
Okay, cool.
Except for like Monday, that thing.
Do they, is it a picture of something? I've been able to read and use my students for like, can I go grab a beer?
Yeah, they have the pool bar.
Okay, okay, cool.
Yep, and then they, they don't do dinners, but they do parlors and stuff around that thing like that still.
Are there a couple veterans that are each every night or, okay, cool.
Yeah, most, I'd say most members are probably sons like me or exilate wives. But yeah, I mean, there's always a good, I'd have to have.
Cool, okay. I really wanna be more connected to that part of me and uh, be with community and I like talking to them and learning their story, so.
What branch are you in?
Air Force.
Okay.
Yeah, I was a medic for six years, should've stayed in. It's okay.
When did you get out?
I was in from two thousand eleven to two thousand seventeen.
Is that why you're out here now, at the Air Force?
Yep, for, for Robert, yeah, and luckily EW is one of like the four schools in the United States that offer this specific outdoor program.
Oh wow.
So, and actually I'm from Tri-Cities.
Oh.
So, pretty cool luck there, yeah, exactly. So we get to go there, I mean, we're there at least while someone visiting our nieces and nephews.
Is he from Tri-Cities or?
No, he's from Pennsylvania.
Okay, is that in the Air Force?
Air Force as well, yeah, he's a.
Did you meet in the Air Force?
He did, yep, yep. Cock, cock kissing at work, you did.
When in high school did you go to Tri-Cities?
Which one?
I wanna go with that. My sister taught there for many years, but she was retired, retired in.
Two thousand twelve.
Oh, okay, in two thousand ten.
Take advancement from middle school.
Oh, absolutely not.
Alright, we'll get started.
But it is a small world.
Alright, we'll get started for the first meeting of twenty twenty-five Le Chine Park Board. Let's just do a quick roll call for commissioners. Uh, Batcock.
Here.
Randall.
Here.
Colin. No Colin, Buck.
Here.
And Berger.
Here.
Valencia. Alright, and then we will go to citizen participation. Do we have any citizen participation in the room or online?
Yes.
If uh, I would suggest if you do have questions or comments, just I think we'll wait, we'll, we'll do some new this year, we'll wait till the end of the meeting. And then we can talk to either commissioner or staff afterwards.
Okay.
So. Alright, and then approval of minutes, the chair will entertain a motion.
I just have to make that motion.
Alright, so we have a motion and a second to approve the minutes, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? None. And the minister approved, we will go to information items with first with Dan Curly for our aquatics update.
Okay, hey Todd, can you hear us? Okay. Okay, we'll all get started.
Yes, I, I can hear you.
Yeah, he said he can.
Okay. Hey, thanks.
There he is.
Yeah, we know, you're out drinking coffee, having donuts.
Oh no, I stopped coffee this AM, so I, I need to get to bed.
Okay, so this month, this last month between the two meetings has been very slow. And you know, part of it's because of the holidays, part of it's because of the weather. And uh, but anyway, it's been slow, so this won't, this won't take too long. And uh, even with pictures, I don't think this last month I can make it look that cool about the tribe. So um, this is the first time that the contractor has described the possibility of running, you know, behind schedule. So not being our main thirty substantial station date. So there, there are basically, uh, there's twelve days we need to make up by their estimation. There's a lot of that could happen in six months, but that's their current estimation. And the best way that they see that we can do that is with the pool contractors. When we get all the pool equipment in prior to open and operating the pool, there's a, like, a lot of time that's involved in starting up the pumps and getting everything worked out. They think that that's an area we can make up the time. Anyway, we'll continue to figure out what we need to be on schedule. We have a construction meeting tomorrow, but then it'll be a very informative meeting and uh, very productive, I think. So um, so, so what they've been doing is that they've decided to put the building together in three different sections. So we've looked at, like last week, we looked at the pool, the pump pits and the surge tank that's underground ready air. Oh, great, what? Yeah, so anyway, so the, 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 the strategy now is we're working on the south part of the building and then we'll move to the northwest part of the building. And so this is where they've been concentrating last month, and so these pictures are some of the things that they've been doing. So uh, inside here, inside here of these, um, and in between the footing, we've been putting in the inter- interior wall plates. And so they're made out of these blocks. And so, right now, we have all of the rooms, if you go by, you can say, oh, there's the changing room for the women, the changing room for the men, there's the, uh, there's the mechanic room. You can start seeing all those things. The other thing that they've been working on is roughing underground plumbing for electricity and just for plumbing. So they're, they're starting to get the plumbing in and electricity in. And um, so some of the other little boring things that are not that cool to hear about, but they've been waterproofing the footing wall with this. They roll on this stuff here, then they put on this insulation board.
That's not boring, it's extremely important for one who's had a flooded basement.
Thank you, Jackie, that's, I appreciate that. Okay, then so this, starting tomorrow, this next month is actually gonna start being kind of exciting because we'll start seeing some improvement. So some, some, some visible improvement. So some of the things that, like, right now, they're gonna start working on tomorrow is they're gonna start backfilling, work all these spaces in between the building structure. So they'll, they'll have the dirt up to the building, so they're gonna get it to the grade so that it'll look like, it'll start to look like an actual building. And so, um, in the next three weeks, all of the stuff they've done to the south portion of the building, right here. There, so right now visually, just put that in perspective, they're, we're about right here right now. And so now, their next three weeks are to start doing the, putting the foundation in over there. And they're basically repeating what they just done over here. And so like, so after tomorrow, they start backfilling the building. They're gonna start, on the south side, they're gonna start putting up the exterior walls. So over the next few weeks, we'll start seeing on the south part of the building, minus the cool side, we'll start seeing these concrete block walls starting to go up. And that'll be kind of cool to see that. And then within the next month, we're hoping that we can get the uh, the concrete exterior walls up on the north building too. And then we can start working on roofing and uh, and dry it in there, so.
So my question is, how can they lay cement? How warm does it have to be to lay cement? Do you know that question? Like, is it gonna get below thirty-two or, you know?
You know, I, Todd, would you like to, to be a little more specific about the cement process?
Yeah, the, the cement, I mean, as long as the weather stays fairly good, they'll, they'll continue to do cement. They have some options that they can do, they can do uh, insulation blankets and layover. Um, i- if we're talking about the footings and foundations and even the blockwork, uh, and, and doing that. Uh, we've had discussion about, you know, basically doing a, a tent dome in, in, in the, in the three areas that Dan is, is kind of laying out. So they can continue to work through the cold weather. Uh, they've also ordered a, um, the actual gas meter in, in trying to get it into a temporary service where they can actually heat the inside of that, that tent. So what you might see is you might see a scaffolding, uh, kind of going up in those sections that are, are very high. And then they will, will basically drape it with the, with plastic and then they can actually heat it. But as far as other cement in the, in the springtime and everything else, I mean, you know, even if it gets cold, it, it won't tend to affect it. If it gets really cold, they do have some options of like putting a thermal blanket over it.
Well, there's some kind of a attitude too, that you can put in this cement when it's cold.
Yeah, it's called a, basically a high early, um, but sometimes that's a little dangerous if you get too much of it in. It does, it's kind of compromise, uh, we like to let it uh, cure out as long as we can. And there are some other uh, options, they do now put fiber glass uh, in, in the concrete as well to strengthen it. So uh, as we have the, the, the large slabs, I'm sure we'll be talking about uh, basically what we want to spec out on, on some of those, those options.
Thank you, Todd. So that's kind of it for the building here, it's, it's not real clamorship, it's gonna get better, so you know. So then budget wise, there's not really any, you know, tangible changes to the budget this month. So, a couple things that have changed on, some of the items that, that we've been talking about to save money potentially, to value engineering items. One of the things we had talked about was doing the murals inside the building. And because of the timing of everything, we just decided that, and, and the, the amount of kind of coordination that was involved to not do that, to just have the contractor stuff, stick with it. Unfortunately, it would've been cool, but uh, we didn't start crossing things off on our list.
And on that same note, I tried to contact, seven to contact the former art teacher at the high school, and she's since moved to Spokane and I didn't, she didn't use much of it, so.
Well, in the meantime though, appreciate everybody, Chelsea too, thank you so much for looking into that, would've been cool, appreciate the effort, like, move on to the other stuff. So then we need to officially answer this whole shade area thing here. Again, this is that, the concrete surfacing, so we, we need to let them know soon. Uh, we could save seventy-five thousand, do some other things, or if we um, you know, keep it, then we have that, and, but we need to let them know soon. One, one little like ripple effect that we, it's really kind of small potato, but we do need to let them know is uh, so we have twelve umbrellas that we're ordering. Five of them are twelve feet, excuse me, five of them are twenty-foot umbrellas, so they're very sizable, we're gonna rent those out for sixty dollars an hour. And then we have uh, seven of twelve-foot umbrellas, they're still pretty big, it'd be great shade, we'll rent those out for thirty dollars an hour. But if we were to get rid of this area right here and put concrete, we would put two cabanas, and then we would get last of those umbrellas. Because, so the sort of a, you know, we, we need to know that because they need to order umbrellas, which is, uh.
So if we, if I just run the track of people, so if we made that cement, why can't we do cabanas with that other, you know, work the interior, right?
Yeah, it's just, my understanding is that with the weight and everything on there, that it just wouldn't be, they like, the appropriate surface for that. That's according to our architect, I don't know the particulars as to why.
Oh, I'm sure.
Yeah. So uh.
So then do we rent out those cabanas?
Yeah, so we were, we have a man, we have it as a hundred dollars an hour, is our potential income on that. And it seems like a really cool, like, for the right party or pretty, uh, excuse me, a hundred dollars for three hours, so it's thirty-three dollars an hour, if you're willing to, that's how I tell you. So um, but.
So, but if, that bothers me. So if there's nobody renting them, and they're just sitting there, nobody can go sit under it?
Yes, so, not to belabor, I just, I never thought I'd run umbrellas as much in my life. The whole umbrella thing, so the way, the way that like it works is like, people pre, pre-register for these umbrellas. And you can guarantee you're gonna have, you can bring your cake in too and have like a little party there. But, but it's first come, first served also, so if it's not rented, you just get it, you just get it for free, so it's a really weird um.
I totally like it.
So.
You wanna pay for it?
That's what, we got this, we stole this policy from Spokane County, and they thought that people should, we just kind of.
Okay, so what I just said would not happen. Now, so if no one rented it and it's just sitting there, and somebody comes in, they can just take their cooler and then sit there.
The one thing is like, is the cabin different? I don't know, like, if you made something different, because that was um, that's like pretty unfair, I feel like, you get there, it's a takeover, like, you don't have any house, you shave it.
But if you wanted, if you wanted, then you'd pay for it.
Yeah, right.
Yeah, if you wanted to guarantee that, that you were gonna get it.
And it may, yeah, I get, I get it.
Right, yes, and we could.
Yeah, I get that.
Put a sign up there saying like, this is reserved at three PM, so you have to leave by three PM.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Kelly restaurants, you know?
Right, right.
Well, your own table, you reserve it.
Yeah.
Okay, I get that.
Yeah.
I'm a little nervous about that pricing for the umbrellas. Because I'll tell you, like, I've gone places like uh, Coronado Island and the Hotel Del Coronado. It's thirty dollars for an umbrella, but you get it all day from ten AM until sunset. And if I'm gonna tell someone here, I'm gonna give you thirty dollars, but you're gonna get three hours to sit outside the pool in Chini. There's, to me, there seems like there's a little bit of imbalance there, but we can, we can have that discussion online, I just, I worry about pricing people out of it.
I agree. I agree.
Appreciate the feedback. So the way we came to that is we basically stole Spokane County's. Well, we, we actually did a rate comparison to all the local jurisdictions that participated. And uh, we would've been five dollars, if, if five dollars an hour cheaper, basically, if we were to go with the rates that we're, um, but anyway, that's the conversation. So, if we're, if we're comparable, then that's fine, I just, I think.
I think it's high.
Right, well, I do too, but I also wanna say if we're comparable, then I, I, part of me says, well, do we wait and see how we perform in the first year?
Yeah, the margin of those.
Is it sixty dollars an hour?
Three, yeah, for three hours, so it's twenty dollars an hour, for the big ones, for the twenty footer. And then that's also the, you're likely doing it because you're doing a birthday party round too. So it's a cheaper way of having enough space and shade, and you could bring your cake in too, sort of like a, um, happy deal. Yeah, so that would be there too. So.
I don't know, I'm just thinking about, well, actually I'm thinking about my husband. You know, when we go, he is, he just varies bigger. And when we go places like Vegas or somewhere, and we're out by the pool, he's always in the shade. You know, unless it's cooler and, for free, you know, and, but, I don't know.
I was saying, not pleasing him rent it.
And that's the thing too, is that uh, Spokane County, if I remember correctly, they generated seven thousand dollars worth of revenue at three different locations, so.
Okay, so is that the same thing? If they're, I mean, are the umbrellas always gonna be up?
Yeah, they'll always be up.
And so, once again, if you want one for sure.
Yep.
Then you pay for it.
If not, we have twelve pool umbrellas at this point, with the probability is fairly decent, you know, if you work hard enough, probably.
It's not gonna blow up.
It's not gonna blow up, you won't make it.
Okay, alright, once again, I find that thing.
They'll come with a stand, so.
It is.
I'm assuming it's gonna stand.
Ours is, is gonna have a little uh, mounting bracket in the concrete.
Okay, perfect.
So, you know, the pool, like, so, so here we are.
Even the great big ones?
That's what I'm understanding.
Okay.
Well, I share Mr. Berger's concern about the price because Spokane pools are free, there are, I believe, like six of them. And they're free with the splash pass. So those residents might not be paying to enter the pool. So I think the umbrellas should be cheaper because people are already paying to enter the pool, whereas Spokane, you're not paying to enter, it's free through the splash pass. And they have nineteen splash pads. So I just worry about pricing the residents of Chini out of using the amenities, these awesome amenities, if they can't afford them. Seven thousand dollars in revenue is great, but if we could make it a little more portable, I also wonder what the average income of a Chini resident versus Spokane. I don't know what it is, but it means I'm curious. You know, I, I just want us to be able to afford to use all these awesome things.
Are we gonna be kicking people out, if there are any umbrellas that are made, I mean, are we gonna have some pleasing now?
Well, as of now, the idea is that it's first come, first served, so. So the only thing I, I mean, I, no, 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 nobody's pleasing unless Kelly has a policy.
I haven't written one up yet. Job opportunity, umbrella food.
Well, Ron, you, you wanna talk more about that?
Uh, just more discussion. We can keep talking or we move on, there's more discussion.
So, are there gonna be any of those umbrellas that are like in a table? Or are they all just individual umbrellas that can be, I mean, you can move a chair over under it, or you, you can move the umbrella around, or?
Well, the, they will not be meant to be moved by the public.
Okay.
And it, it should be secure enough that it's, it takes, you know.
Okay, so, but, but you could bring a chair over underneath it?
Yeah, the only thing is, is that, the, the way to bring value to it would be to buy picnic tables too, which comes out of our fixed furniture allowance.
So it's all just the umbrella, doesn't come with it?
So that, that's the thing too, that we have to purchase, and that's something we'll talk about here in a second, is that we, we have eighty thousand dollar investment. And that would include, I mean, like picnic tables.
Well, I don't know that you needed picnic table, if you're just wanting some shade, like to read your book, or to just sit out, get out of the sun. If you're, you know, more and more people are staying out of the sun.
Could be half, but some could make tables in the sun shade?
Well, I think that you say that the big ones will have a table.
Yeah, that's the thought, yeah, for sure. And again, before, like, I talked about umbrellas, a lot of times I've talked about that much, where I know, like, if there's gonna be a picnic table under the, I would not think so under the twelve footer. Because we only have so much money too. But um, it sounds like maybe we need, we could uh, maybe do a little more thought, you know?
So who, who ultimately accepts these rates? So I assume staff recommends, council, if you also make a year, then council ultimately agrees then?
I believe so, Todd, well, this, this will probably go to a rate adoption. All of our.
Yeah, that would be a, a kind of a, a fee resol-. Solution where we recommend, uh, you know, to that end, and then, then council would probably have, have that discussion. And, and I'm hearing all your points, and I, I do agree, and this is, this is new to us, so we don't really have anything to go by except for kind of doing research locally. When we talk to the county, you know, we wanna kind of be in the same price, you know, as sessions and these types of amenities and not maybe undercut or, or overpay is what you're saying. So we wanna kind of be a, a good uh, kind of a community area, uh, you know, to that end. And then when you, when you're talking about, um, you know, umbrellas and shade and all that, I'm hoping to have programs that the people that. Like, that really can't afford even to do the sessions, hopefully we do get some, um, you know, some donations that can afford, you know, having these, these type of things happen. Um, what, what we're trying to do is, this first year, the first and second year, we're gonna try to figure out where, what percentage we are on to the, uh, you know, kind of recapturing and, and paying for the operations and maintenance of the pool. You know, whether that comes in at, at fifty, we talked, uh, a discussion with Spokane County, uh, it was right around fifty percent. Uh, when you take a look at that, uh, that is a, a, a pretty big hit on the park board or the parks' budget to that end. So there is a subsidy that will, will have to happen, and it's not uncommon, the old pool had a, a fairly large subsidy as well. Um, but the whole idea is to try to give us a good price point where we can maintain the operations of that pool without really deep diving into the budget of the parks. So, uh, like I say, this is a moving target. Uh, when we get closer and, and right, we're only, we're in January here, so we are gonna have to have some of the, a little bit more of these discussions and, and kind of set that fee. Because I'm, I'm thinking that if we're gonna sell any season passes or anything else, that's probably gonna be happening in April or May, uh, bef, when we have a better idea when, when the pool is gonna open, so. I hope that, that answers your question, but yes, a fee resolution will be going out, uh, probably a recommendation of the fees by the park board to the council.
I was gonna say, I did pull up some census data, um, Chini, the average income uh, for the census is about forty-seven thousand dollars. They're just looking at seventy-three thousand dollars.
That's skewed by the last year.
But Spokane has, we're thinking, so I, I, I'm hesitant to say it's, it's, I mean, they're both skewed that way, I think if there's.
There's an average population plus geography.
Yeah.
I, I recommend we can table this until Dan and Todd get more of a sense of what the rates are gonna be. Like, I, like Todd said, it's kind of, I assume that you're first cut at it.
That's, that's something else, um, thank you. Good discussion, um, so then fundraising, you know, it takes this month, uh, hopefully this, this spring's gonna have to be very active, uh, as we get closer and beyond. Operations, very soon, we will start purchasing our furnishing items, like I mentioned, we have eighty thousand dollars total to spend on like a conference table for the community room. So TVs, we have a couple of different TVs that are going, basically deck furniture. Eighty thousand doesn't, I don't know, it kind of makes you a little nervous, it's like.
Oh, yeah.
That's gonna, oh, that's gonna spend.
Immigrants.
Yeah, it is, and uh, and, and like, two other like items that, for example, that are, you know, at some point, we may have to do some prioritization. So in the plan, they call for two suit swimmers, which are super cool, like, their swimsuits, uh, dryers, you put them in there.
Yeah.
Eastern housing.
Ringers, yeah.
Yeah.
They're gonna, or like.
You know, and I think that they're, like, last time I checked, they're, I wanna say they're right around two thousand dollars, so.
I don't think they're worth it. I can't, these are old, like.
Old cranks, well, who knows, we do that type of stuff.
Not for it.
But, but those are the type of decisions that, that we'll have to make. There's a meeting, um, here very soon with the architect, uh, to just, we can lay everything out, what exactly do we wanna make sure is good as late as eighty thousand dollars? Or do we need to, like, add a couple of some more money, so.
Those top lift chairs that, that go to the wall, and you can strap your little kiddo in there, so it's hands-free, are the, is that in the budget at all? I know it's been months since we talked about it.
Or in the locker room?
Yes.
Yeah.
We, we did that, yes, I believe that, um, I think Brooke may have been here when you guys had presented that, our architect.
Yes.
I'm like ninety-nine point nine percent sure that that's in there.
Okay.
But um, I will check on that.
Cool.
Um, so then operations too, Kelly mentioned that job postings will probably be out here very soon. And uh, we're working on the operations manual, and just we need to start finding, as we go through there, we're just, you know, things are starting to become more clear, like, what exactly, um, like our lifeguard rotation, those type of things, like, we have to be scenarios that they're gonna have to be literally dialed in to suit our facility. And again, like, figuring out how to use this, and uh, yeah, that's it, so, that's, that's what I have.
Any more questions for Dan?
I was absent last meeting, I just wanna make sure that I understand where the solar panels added, was that voted on?
So all five of the, all, actually all six of the alternate items went to city council in November, I believe. And uh, four of the six, um, items were approved of the bid alternate items, including the solar panels. The solar panels, I believe, uh, we ended up coming, coming out to a ten thou, roughly ten thousand dollars.
Um, you, you started with the presentation, you said you were, you were gonna make a decision, were you, were you gonna keep it a ban area or not? Uh, is that like, next week, week after, budget, that's the dumb budget, or what was?
Todd, would, would you be able to, uh, the question is, is with the uh, surf, the play surfacing area being replaced. Ron's question is, well, when, when you make a decision on that, and.
What factors go into that?
Yeah, I mean, um, I, I've been getting a little bit of, of concern on, on the play surface, a- as far as the play surface in the aquatics facility. Um, we're doing some research, we're doing some replacement cost. Um, but, but I was asked to, if we are going to make a change, to bring that to full council for, for some discussion. And I don't know, uh, what the issues are, maybe some community members are, are talking to council member, but they, they kind of wanna vet it out if we decide to go that direction. So, um, as far as uh, the, the play surface and the playgrounds and everything else, I'm not too sure that that's really gonna be an issue. I think we need to kind of move forward with it. Um, I, I think Paul's been a really good proponent of, of, of wanting to, you know, move the project forward, to find additional funding if needed, uh, to that end. So I think it's, at this time, we keep moving forward, we are gonna come up against a deadline, we're gonna have to make a decision, either due to a, uh, concrete versus that, that surface area in that corner. Uh, and when we do, then uh, if we do propose it, it will come back as a, a change, uh, order, uh, probably a change order deductive. But it will still go to council because that's what they've requested me to do.
Oh wow. So I, my thoughts, probably Todd, we'd probably, I mean, just based off of the project timeline, that, that would probably end up needing to go to council, I'm guessing at the next council meeting or somewhere thereabout, so like on the twenty eighth or so of this month?
Yes.
So, as I look at this picture, and if I remember what you said, if we want to do the cabanas, that's pictured there, it needs to be concrete. I think that makes sense, yeah.
I agree.
Um, I mean, if somebody needs to put down a little one in the, in the chair. You know, I don't know, but we need a creature surface.
I'm not sure, a chair, but.
Okay, a couple towels. Under the umbrella, and like they run in.
Did you want us to vote on it?
Well, I think we've, I feel like we've already sort of mostly gone through this conversation a few times, and the feedback has been generally, there seems to be consensus, like, let's just not. But I think at the um, city council level, there there are some um, there are some considerations there that that they'd like to edit out too, so.
Yeah, yeah. Well, I know Paul's concerned about that.
Todd, do you have anything else about the pool?
Um. No, not not at this time, except uh, hopefully, we won't get into a real good snowstorm and we can keep them active, because I know that they probably put in some snow days in there. So, you know, fortunately, uh, even though we had some delays with the uh, with the soil and everything, we've been able to work so far. And we'll probably continue to work. It's just gonna get colder, but we don't have a a large snowstorm, knock on wood, right? Now, coming in, that would would kind of delay them.
Any other questions for Dan? Okay, we'll move on to dog park update. Uh, go ahead.
Uh, so I got an email from Paul, and he said that city council is still talking about installing the shelter and adding adding ground cover, and then he's also very invested in adding a water fountain for the dogs. Um, so he just wanted to let us know that council's still discussing it, and he will hopefully have an update for us in February.
And I printed that out, so I think we need to make sure that we talk about before we put in structures, to talk about the ground cover. And he said, of course, that there's never enough money. But can we use litigation fees for that? Is that a?
Park mitigation fee? I would assume so.
Yeah, I I I would assume so. Uh, what Paul has asked me to do is get a uh, uh, there there would be some sizable material to bring up. What, if you take a look at the dog park, it does tend to have a real big dip in it, you know, where the fence is, and there's some low line areas. We discussed about trying to get in and maybe till that up, but I'm not recommending. Um, that that lot has had history to it. And I'm not, I'm not a proponent of of putting a disc to it and and kicking up a bunch of rocks or whatever else is in that ground. So uh, the proposal is to import some some soil as as a subbase, and then make a decision whether it would be more of a seed or if there's coming up with some type of top mix. But our our soil, uh, we have uh thousands of yards of soil out at our fifty acre park. Um, so our discussion right now is to uh get some costs on some uh some hauling costs from some some contractors. So that's what uh uh we're up to right now, and I'm hopefully gonna get some uh some costs, and then we are looking at quite a few yards, like six hundred plus yards infield, just to kind of level that out. And then we can have the discussion of what type of top filled material do you want on that? Is it gonna be just a a dryland grass, or do we want to go with a sand mix, or do we want to go with something uh a a bark material? I have no idea. But but that's where uh, that's the discussion right now.
And so that would be the first thing that we do, then, is to bring in the dirt?
Yeah, yeah. And we can bring in, uh, that, there there's two piles out there. There's some uh good clay material, which is, you know, not clay is really not big, but it's a good subbase uh to that end. If you were to take a look at seeding and then and we do have some uh pretty good size, or a pretty good quantity of of just nice black soil. Um, so there is some options to take a look at if we wanted to do some some seeding. Uh, what what would happen, I think, is that if we ever did something like that, we'd almost have to fence part of it off to get something done and get some seed going in there, and then cut it out the second portion of it. Somehow, that that way, the people aren't getting uh uh tearing it up and that type of stuff. So there there's some logistics to trying to get that uh that surface.
Would it be possible just to shut down the dog park for a couple of months? Or is that not an option?
We could, I I just don't know. I mean, what I've heard and what I've seen is there's quite a few people that go there every day. Uh, we'd have to get the notice out, you know, to that end. But I think what the, what the discussion is, could we actually do a temporary fence across half of it? And then keep portion of the dog park open while the seed grows and then just shift it over?
Okay.
Those type of, that that type of discussion.
Well, you did mention maybe a sand mix, and so by that, you mean just to have that as the top and no vegetation?
Yeah, yeah. So that 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 would be an option. Um, you know, whether, uh, I I think when I'm, it was been a few years when research and top is, it was a uh kind of a chip or granite or hard granite, but it was very, very expensive. That was mostly the ideal for dog parks. Um, you know, and I I think whether a pea gravel or something like that would work too, I just don't know. Or maybe just a sand mix without a lot of clay. Uh, in our traction sand, we we call for a a very light clay, but more of a very small chip to it. Um, so, yeah, th- there is a lot of uh some some things that you can research to see, you know, obviously, a a dryland grass or something that's gonna need maintenance, uh, a full lawn facility would would need irrigation and even more maintenance uh to that end. So I think, thinking about what that surface would look like, and then we can put a price together.
I think the biggest concern with um substrate material needs to to kind of bed it with is water, Coolidge, and things like that, obviously irrigation, but also it's much more than money there too. And so I don't, I don't know a lot about sand, so I can tell you what it would be like, but I'm worried about cooling water, that kind of stuff. That would be my main concern too, because what's the use of of laying down a new thing if it's, but it's gonna go, of this, of water, I think, things. So it's, there's things to look at, of of.
Usage and and how it's gonna be maintained, but also what's gonna happen during, you know, fall, winter, in spring.
Well, and if it was pea gravel, it would be hotter than places in the summer.
Yes.
It gets blocked and foggy.
And it's difficult to like, yeah, walk and run on it.
Yeah. I would agree. Any type of sand where you're trying to try to do a weed beer, a lot of sand, you know, that type, that that times gets a little, pea gravel is tough to walk in when it gets to a couple inches as well. So I I'm not too sure, uh, you know, what other dog parks use. Mostly, it's uh uh grassland or 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 something like that. But I know that there was some some type of chip form, um, that was also kind of discussed.
Was it clover that we were discussing?
Yeah.
Yes.
Clover, snow bark, sweet snow bark, or grow about a few foot bark in.
So clover is really unique in the fact that it it's low maintenance. It doesn't need to be watered, it doesn't need mowed. Um, it really doesn't need to be maintained at all. Um, it uses and retains the moisture, it's already the soil. And so it's.
Yeah.
It's a good option, um, and it's obviously soft on paws. It's kind of, it's lawn-like. So it's not like you're, you have dog food that's, wouldn't ship stuff to it, or gravel or sand or anything like that. So that's also something to think about, because dog, they're dedicating there, like, over time, you know, lose some of the stuff that we're putting in there. I don't know if it's mainly a lot, so it's noticeable, but that's also something to be aware of as well, because, I don't know, so much stuff.
And people will just kick, if if material is there, people will just kick that material over the feces. You've got another problem. I know these seem like unique problems, but I spent so much time at dog parks.
It adds up too.
So, yeah.
There, that place is literally my, I always have to worry. So those are just some of the things that we need to, like, if there's, I will say that there's never a good solution for this, like, we're gonna have to make connections somewhere, because there's, there's no way. Um, but I think in a ideal world, then you have a soft material that obviously doesn't burn paws, get stuck in paws, you know, you want to see an enjoyable experience with dogs, and for your favorite, so just keeping that, like, a good, it's a thing that we should do, we need to worry, so.
Um, since we have Todd online, I think we should move forward, make an information item, and just talk with Todd about, um, potentially setting up a mowing schedule for, was it various parks, was it the last one?
Yeah.
Someone wanted, we have a session, so someone put it on?
Yeah, we were, we were just wondering, Todd, if we could get a mowing schedule. Like, what is, how do they mow the parks? When do they decide, like, Mondays, do they do Sutton Park, Tuesdays, do do the Hallidgen Park? Do we have some kind of schedule like that?
Yeah, I mean, the 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 regular parks, and I don't know right offhand, you know, they try to hit the parks at least o- once, you know, once a week. A lot of times during the summer or the fall, uh, we try to align it with, like, baseball. Uh, so if a baseball is going on, we don't want to mow it on Monday when they have a Friday game, because then it's too too tall. So sometimes that kind of gets shifted around where we try to try to do mowing where the the grass is most ideal during the sports. But yeah, I can get you a kind of a mowing schedule. We can try to, depending on on how we we look at it, we try to do uh at least a two to three day a week where we have somebody out there mowing. Uh, you know, it 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 takes quite a few hours to mow all the parks. So uh, but there's other stuff to to do in the in the parks, and then there's also green space, because the street and the parks kind of have their time together. But yeah, I can, I can get together, like, a mowing schedule, uh, just to kind of see what that would look like and then what, how long it really takes. Um, one thing that we did do, uh, the with the budget pass, there there is actually gonna be purchase of two uh zero uh turning radius mowers, uh, which was we needed it. I mean, we have some old, very old toros that was completely broke down and everything else, so. Um, yeah, I I can work on a mowing schedule, uh, unless somebody has some idea is, and it was, if there's any concerns, or were you hearing stuff that was not being mowed? Um, but yeah, typically, we try to mow at least once a week, all all the parks.
Any questions about?
Um, well, first of all, we know the dog park, the weeds didn't get cut on that, so that that was an issue. I just know that in some of the parks, I am just so embarrassed, but why can't I remember where I live?
Hibbert?
Hibbert, thank you. I need those brain pills. Um, sometime, it, the weeds are bad. Some of the areas in that park, the weeds are bad, and if it doesn't get mowed for a while, the weeds get worse. So we were just.
Yeah, there was, there was some irrigation. Yeah, if it if it's a certain park, um, that we need to pay attention to, yeah, we will focus on that. Uh, but if you're, you know, if you're letting me know that, we do, we do mow mow most of the bigger parks. Hibbert Park has always been a challenge right now. It's because of the irrigation, the pumps went out, and I think we got the pump basically back up and running. Um, and then hopefully, when we get into spring, we can e- either reseed it, we're we're talking right now, might have to reseed it, and do a a pretty good kill on the weeds, because when it wasn't being irrigated, that's when the weeds took over and the lawn kind of died out.
Yeah. Okay.
Todd, would you be able to have the?
But it's uh.
Sorry, go ahead.
Go ahead.
I was just.
No, it's fine.
I was gonna ask if uh we, if you'd be able to provide the mowing schedule for us at the next meeting in February?
I can, yeah, yeah, if there's a mowing schedule, or what we can do is we can develop a mowing schedule. Um, i- if I direct them to mow, and and if we need to get it, you know, whatever we need to get done and we're short, then it's a matter of short on staff, because um, we only have basically uh, two people that are 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 mowing the parks, and 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 that's, it's kind of hard. So we're talking about bringing on another utility worker and everything else. We have a third person, but we share about three positions, uh, trying to do all of the street maintenance, all of the parks maintenance. So it really is a staffing uh uh issue when we have it. So they they try to uh do their best, but if we come up with a mowing schedule and and figure out how much uh uh we need personnel to to be on the mowers, uh, then that that's what the park, if the park board makes that recommendation, maybe we can uh hire additional uh seasonal help.
That's what my question is, that, I know in the past, you said you had a hard time finding seasonal work. Uh, maybe we could try that again, see if we could get, um, just people to come mow the lawns as a part-time position. Is that possible?
Yeah, we 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 have uh, some students that are, that come in as a part-time uh, position. We we try to hire uh people, uh, like a high school or or college people on summer break, and that's what's, that's what's difficult, is trying to find those those people. Um, you know, right now, we've brought on, go ahead.
Did you say that park board would need to make a recommendation to hire more uh seasonal staff? Would they need to make that?
No, I think, you know, I, you you, yeah, we can make that, we can have that discussion, but um, you know, obviously, it it, whatever we need to take out of the park's budget, uh, that that's where it's gonna be, and and that's really not me, uh, to that end. That's Mark. Mark is is really the one that is working on the, but he is actually the park and and rectorector, so to speak, to that end. Um, and I don't even have the budget in front of me. I I didn't do the parks budget, uh, so I don't know what he had put in uh for seasonals, and in that line item, I don't know what that means for lifeguards, uh, workers and everything else to that end.
Yeah, that's what the school.
What I can say is, if I can. Go ahead. Yeah. Yeah. I I I, the school district has that same problem too, uh, uh, just retaining people to that end. A a lot of people just don't like that that summertime work.
What would be the age limit for that, sixteen?
I, yeah, I think sixteen, I would have to defer that to Mark or Carrie. Um, but I think you can actually uh uh provide sixteen.
I've got a quick question, moving back to the dog park, Tom. Uh, and did you decide on one?
Um.
Just before we get further away from that.
We've, we looked at, I mean, we picked one that's both people and dog together.
Cool, that was great.
Yeah.
Awesome.
I don't remember the exact.
Like the bottom one and?
Yeah.
Cool. Good.
Any more comments, questions about, um, mows? We'll move on to.
I can provide you, oh.
Go ahead, Todd.
I can provide you a mowing schedule. I will provide you, I will provide you a mowing schedule, what we tried to, uh, last year, and then and then kind of fill in the gaps.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, we'll move on to board member reports, and the reports. All right, staff reports?
Uh, just real quick, with Ethan on paternity leave, we hired a um EWU student who is in the Recreation Experience Management Program. Um, her name's Grace, and she will be working part-time to oversee youth sports and um some youth programs that Ethan had programmed before he left. Um, but she's doing, doing great so far. And also, the spring summer guide, Leslie, I'm gonna give you a copy to make sure I didn't mess anything up. Um, and then hopefully, by the end of this week, beginning of next week, I'll send it to the printers and we'll have it within the next couple of weeks.
I I have one other thing. I did get an email. I have a, uh, and I didn't know really where to go with this, other than to to kind of be transparent about it. Uh, we did have, we do have a resident that uh actually uh, lives on Sixth Street and North Second, and basically, that his ba- backyard is on the Cheney Community Gardens, and he would like to uh, go along his property line, but he realizes probably gonna be in the community gardens property. He would like to plant some uh kind of uh fruit trees uh to that end, it's like some apple trees or peach trees to that end, and and we don't really have a policy on it. Uh, we allow uh people to uh set up their own gardens, create their own gardens. So uh I was just trying to uh kind of see if there was any direction. It's, this is a long history of of who actually controls the uh the community gardens. Uh, I know that the uh, they do have a uh, the community garden that has an association that 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 maintains it, and obviously, we'll talk to them. But I think uh, that is, that property out there is considered park ground. So I just wanted to kind of run that by you. Um, to me, I don't think it's gonna really be an issue. We could probably make an agreement that uh, if he plants the the trees, that if he would maintain them, and if he does do some harvest, that he would uh, kind of act like uh, like the community garden does, is is donate some of that uh uh, that fruit to the to the food bank. So that's something that I'm just kind of kicking around.
I mean, that's great.
I think that's cool with it.
I am.
Yeah. Yeah, I think there is that provision to provide at least a quarter of that.
Well, and assuming, as you said, that he maintains it, which means that he probably is gonna have to spray it, spray them for worms and things.
Yeah, I would I would say that if he was gonna do that, we would have some type of of an agreement for him to go ahead and do that.
Is someone gonna monitor like where and how he actually plants the trees?
Yeah, I would think so, I mean, uh obviously, as he, I think what he wants to do is just kind of buffer it a a little bit from his property, you know, the between the two. So um I'm sure there's there's some type of of spacing on these on these trees.
Instead of a hen and cheese, gotcha, I didn't want to. I think that's fair.
I think there's consensus, I think everyone.
Win for everyone, cool.
It's cool with that?
Thank you.
Any other staff reports?
Well, I just have one more thing too about the dog park. Um originally, I was hoping that once we got the dog parks, that we would have like, like the community gardens where it's a community. And that we would have meetings, like mowing nights and potlucks, I thought that'd be so much fun. I think once we did do something like that, and we had a whole group of people that were invested in the dog park, I think they would help take care of it. And I think if there was somebody at the dog park that was not picking up the dog food, that they would be, I hate the word, use the word chained in cleaning up after their dog. But I think if you had a community of people using the dog park and they wanted to take care of it, that if you had a community invested in it, I think eventually, we could get to that as soon after we get it off. You know, our big thing was just the fence around it, which we did. And now we get the top soil done and some kind of that stuff there.
I think Shane is around, or I think we're slated.
Oh, okay, that's a better word.
Of like peer pressure.
Peer pressure.
Cause I feel bad, I mean, you can't walk your dog anywhere now, like I used to walk across the middle school grounds, and now they have big signs, and I don't blame them, because people don't pick up after their dogs. And so the kids go out and it's all over the grass, so. But I think if we had a community of people that helped other people realize, pick up after their dogs.
It's not that hard to.
And those.
We provide the bags for them.
Bags of ongoing drawing. Right.
So you have no excuse, you literally need to bring the bag with you and pick it up.
Well, and you can get like two hundred fifty bags of opportunity for fifteen dollars, so, no excuse. But it's lazy, anyway.
Actually, as you say that, I'm just kind of thinking we could perhaps do something similar in each of the parks. Have an event in each park, like twice a month, through the nice weather. Theme or something. And I was really, have people in the park looking at each other and saying, you know.
You like our park space.
Yeah. This is, this is your community, and you know, we don't wanna put down our blanket and find dog poop.
And I was really sad when we had to cancel the Easter egg hunt for the dogs, I was looking forward to that, you know, so.
Because not enough people signed up?
I think they were just gonna show up, because you have people that called and complained, because it was canceled, right?
I don't like to afford, it's a, it's a probably new year for dogs, you put treats and Easter.
We put, yeah, we put treats and toys and some Easter eggs, and we're gonna scour them around the dog park and get those around for them.
Oh, and but nobody signed up?
We had like seven people sign up.
Oh.
And that wasn't enough to have a whole event.
Yes, if I that cost of probably.
Yeah.
Is there like a community park friendship society?
I don't.
Yeah.
Yeah. That's what I'm talking about.
Yeah, you're saying part of it.
I think people that have like an option at that, like the men events, and have something, obviously volunteer based, that like a farm, for the sense that you can do that. Um and they could also have like fundraising for the pool or putting on those events or whatever else, like. Maybe with, we need citizen participation.
Well, before the voting, the pretty aquatic center, we gave, gave form of friends and pool. Group. And that, that they have a Facebook page. So maybe something similar to that.
Do you have the run stuff page?
Yes.
Change the name?
Yeah, could it?
No, it's too later.
Oh. Could it kind of expand into a friends of the park?
Well, see, after we get the the pool up and running.
Yeah, it doesn't have to maybe get, I just think, I like the idea, I like the idea of getting people to buy in and and.
That can lead to coordination.
Yes, that makes a difference.
It does.
I think you'd have people interested.
I absolutely do too, yeah.
I just have one more question for the pool. Can can we bring in uh picnic? Like if I was bringing a picnic basket, then.
What do we decide on the food policy, right? Cause you can bring a cake, correct?
Yeah, so I I wanna say that we briefly talked about this a while back, and then we brought up the fact that we needed to come up with some sort of policy, and we never did that since, but um you know, basically, my my understanding of what like Spokane County pools is doing is that they are about to outside food beverage on the on the pool deck, and that that's what the parks are, have like a like a dental side, you know, bring the cakes and that's.
But so there's no grassy area, I was, I thought that there.
This used to be a grassy area.
So there's no place they could bring, you could bring in a picnic once, I'm gonna be in trouble with my water.
No, honestly, I think that when we, when we met with Spokane County, we've met multiple times, but there we were talking about concessions. We realized that we don't have that concession part ironed out, and in some of those policies related to food and drink, so. That was still, that's another thing on our operational list that we need to iron out.
So those are the, I put that in the drinks, also attract food to the park.
That's a great point.
We have those bad problem there with the with the wasps, yeah.
Oh, yeah, yeah.
But they're gonna fix that, right? In the parks, they haven't fixed that?
Well, we haven't had water there for several years, and I think that's what threw them apart.
Well, just when we were doing, remember when we had the big party at the park? And we were talking about the pool, and we had hot dogs, what did we call that? Anyway, I looked up, I bet it was this big, right above my head. And it has been like that from day one from the pool, it's not just the water. It's because we don't spray the trees, we've got to spray the trees in the spring every year. Can we do that? Tucked like, oh, please.
Yeah, I guess, yeah, yeah, I I guess you you can, uh we can. I I think what we need is more or less a a a what are we gonna do with these parks? It sounds like, uh and and really put a forefront effort on it uh to that end. So and and to be honest, what parks can we thoroughly maintain, and what parks can we just, we struggle with? And and those are the things that that uh, you know, I think a lot of this is, is that we need to have, start having contracts. Spraying contracts, fertilizing contracts, everything that we need to do and.
Amen, amen, right there.
So but but keep in mind that the the that the parks budget is a priority thing. And and I wanna make sure that there is no other income for the parks. So the four point five percent that we get on electrical and natural gas tax runs the parks and the income off the recreational side. So the park can be balanced to a certain aspect of it, but there are some things that we can only work within the budget, and those are the priorities that we and and that's really just the reality that how we how we have operated that, because we don't have additional monies uh to to go with that parks.
I I feel like if people can't bring their own food, but can buy concessions, that's another cost to taking your family to Aquatic Center. And if it's not a bee problem, so then there should be no food if it's a bee problem. But people are still gonna bring food in anyway. I agree.
So the way they. The way they do it at the north, or sorry, south side Aquatic Center, they have concessions that you can purchase. Um so, cause we take our summer camp kids there, and they'll eat lunch there, and they will bring their sack lunch with them. But they go out and sit in the grassy area outside of the pool to eat their lunch, and then go back in.
Okay, yeah.
And we do have a lot of park space for families to do that, if they wanna bring food, and then they can go into the park and eat and come back in.
Cool. Right on.
So if people could bring in a water bottle into the pool, and of course, the glass.
I'm changing. I think I would hope people would bring a water bottle when they're outside and it's hot, they should have water.
So do you want to just add a stadium the next month, food and beverage at the pool?
Yeah, I would say make it an option, I haven't something to get that hammered out and.
Actually, I'd vote on it.
Hey, hey, Dan, correct me if I'm wrong, did we, uh when we went in between the locker rooms, are we not having like a water bottle filling station there? Did we talk about that?
I honestly, I don't remember talking.
Okay.
I I I remember daily.
Yeah, I thought we we talked about, yeah. Yeah, water bottles, a great glass is not too popular around pools, we don't wanna, you know, to do that, but if people wanna bring their their metal ones or or whatever, I think we could, we probably work with some policies on that. But I recall a drinking fountain or possibly even a a water filling station.
So just now that you've written it up, my my thought was that that might have been just outside of the changing rooms on the deck, so I think, Todd, that's a good point, I think there is a a water bottle filling station.
So sorry, so it's about some like some like mystery, I'm trying to figure, so, yeah, I think that one, right?
That would make sense.
So we'll look into that too, remind me.
As long as you change the filter, make it a little bit.
Yeah, and then if people wanted to go, you know, if they brought a cougar and locked it in their car, make it go up to the grass. Are they gonna get some kind of stamp or something to readmit in the school?
We are at our hour, is there anything else miscellaneous with the order? If not, we'll adjourn the meeting. Thank you.
Thanks.
Thank you, thanks, Ron.
Next time. Yeah, I can speed you. You were the same shit from earlier too.
Yeah, I tried to.